Okay. We're gonna call this meeting ordered. Uh, at this time, we're gonna do the pledge.
United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um. Tell you what, this way. I'm gonna have you do a prayer. That's right. Dear Father, what can you do for us? We thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessing that you've bestowed on each and every one of us together here. Father, once again, we, we ask you to protect, uh, this nation, this state and this farm. Uh, as I always say, uh, we know that you got the whole world in your hand. You know what we're going through at this time. Father, we ask you to just, just give us the, the peace and the mindset of Father's eyes. Father, we ask you to look over this meeting as we do the business of Fort White and Columbia County for this afternoon. Father, we ask you to bless our troops, especially the ones that are over in Afghanistan right now as they serve around the world, to give us the freedom that, that we have, that we can meet up and settle like this. But most of all, Father, we ask you to thank for your son, Jesus Christ, that you sent a cavalry, dead and buried, third day he rose from the dead. We thank you for him and the blood that he shed for giving us the house and. These are all the blessings we ask in his name. Amen. Amen. Before we get started, I, I just wanna say, oh. I've been waiting on this day a long time. We finally have joined in with the town of Fort White on an interloper agreement for utility. I look forward to working with Fort White on this and, uh, uh, like I said, it's, it's been a long time coming. I'm glad it's, uh, they finally got here and I wanna thank my board for being cooperative. Uh, and helping Fort White. I wanna thank the council of Fort White for being on board with the cameo of this issue. Uh, I think this is gonna be a, a historic day in our county and, uh, like I say, I'm just glad that the clerk of court to be here to be a part of it and our, our, uh, property pleaser. Uh, appreciate y'all coming to the meeting and, uh, at this time, I will ask for.
Uh, I would like to echo Commissioner Ford's, uh, comment and, and, and his was important. And, and here is why I, I, I really like the relationship between Fort White and the Board of Council commissioners. Uh, Fort White would have been walked away from their offices and by stature, the county would have to take it up anyway. But, uh, with them, uh, are willing to work together and not just abandon it, but to step up to the plate also, it makes this work a lot, a lot better and we just appreciate the relationship that we have with the town of Fort White and the Board of Council Commissioners.
And, and, and I would just say also, I'm, I'm the commissioner for district two, Fort White is in district two and, uh, I am passionate about my district, my whole district, about working and getting things done in my district. Uh, I hope the board don't feel like I'm overstepping my bounds sometimes by doing stuff for the, uh, town. But if, uh, if you ever feel that way, just let me know and I'll, I'll include y'all and some, about including everybody. Appreciate it. At this time, uh, I will ask for approval of this agenda.
Do you want a housekeeping item real quick?
Yes.
There's no sound system in this room, so please, anybody who speaks, speak loudly so that it can be picked up by the recorder and also the speaker, we do have a speaker in here. Uh, side conversations in the audience, please limit because it will keep, um, the recording from hearing the board members delivering. Just ask to keep side conversations limited and if anybody can speak up, please speak up because we wanna make sure you all get recorded. Thank you very much.
There's, there's also a, uh, sign sheet back there also if anybody wants to speak. So they need to sign on the sheet too, so.
On the table next to the book.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion over the agenda? Got a motion, second, all the favors?
Aye.
Okay, um, we've been asked to put the wastewater utility at the, at the first of the agenda because of the way they have their, uh, power point set up. So at this time, we'd ask, uh, Mr. Pop, if you'll come up and do your presentation.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity today to come over the council members and the commissioners and to be able to share with you the, uh, regional water, wastewater treatment facilities plan and, uh, water system improvements. And again, I'd like to reiterate that this is, we're not here to make any decisions or anything that we, uh, you know, this is, this is informational purposes for the, for the council and for the commission, for the general public. There won't come a point in time here, probably October or somewhere, that a decision has to be made, but right now, what we're doing is getting your input before we give, end this back off DEP and they pass it on to the clearinghouse and, and do what they do to get those ready to, if, if council and, and the law and commission assisting them decide to go forward with this, then, uh, they can go forward and be included on next February, next February's agenda for, uh, design in the permitting books. So that's, that's what we're doing here today. Not any pressure to make a decision or anything, uh, on this order of water. It's informational, uh, again, there will come a point that you'll have to make a decision, but that's not, uh, something that you're gonna have to do today. So what I would like to do, I want to hopefully make sure. There you go. Um, we're just gonna go and a- again, I'm Bob White, professional engineer, senior water resources engineer, which is more part of professional services. Uh, my, my background is in everything that's water, uh, stormwater, water and wastewater. Uh, we have with us today, of course, uh, most of you know Greg Bailey, who is our founder and our, uh, president. Uh, Greg's got a lot of experience in, uh, water and wastewater as well. We've got Ricky Hendricks, who's recently joined us. Ricky's a professional engineer, um, paying to us, uh, we're here before, you know, GRU at the time, uh, his, uh, his master's degree is from Auburn University. He said not to say that, there might be too many gators in here, I'll go ahead and throw them under the bus anyway. He has master's degrees with water and wastewater from Auburn University. And of course, we've got Jacob, uh, Bradley with us. Jacob is the, the man that put a lot of this work in to put this together and, uh, he is , uh, also, uh, uh, the, uh, project manager for the town of Fort White. So that being said, I'm gonna go and continue and go through, uh, the wastewater. Uh, if, and, uh, if you'll just hold your questions, after we get through it, you have a time to where you jot a question down, we'll, we'll answer questions and we'll kick it over to whoever, myself or Greg or, or Jacob or Ricky, whoever is set to answer. What, what we're gonna show you first is, uh, if, if you look here, this is working down into phases and this is, this is the, uh, service area. Um, we've broken it into phases and I don't know how well you can see it, what you've got is you've got, uh, phase one here, two and three. And then this area here is a piece currently owned by Long Calip, where we would hope to put the wastewater treatment plant and, uh, the spray field for disposal. And then out here, we have phases four through nine, which encompasses all three rivers of the states and part of those phases, four through nine, is Inchotown Springs State Park. Where, and I'll give you a little background, um, concerning why this is, came from just being the town of Fort White plant, uh, to a regional plant. The, we submitted for the town of Fort White, for the wastewater plant on a springs grant for Slender Water Management District. They approved it. It went to, um, DEP and it's turned down and so we came back and we wanted to know what, who could do better the next time. We met with the Slender Water Management District and then what they recommended we do, which I, uh, Jacob, uh, from our office, um, Bill Williams, Jacob Kraus was with us, Lonnie was with us, Frazier and, uh, and Shannon Williams from our office a- a- as well and, uh, and Lockie was with us. We went over and met with the, the top three people for springs grant. They also handle legislative appropriations, Trina Bellhauer, Sandy Waters and Joe Khan and asked them about it and what they told us, one of the things they said was it would be, they felt that it would get more interest and would be more likely to receive not just loans with grant funding, uh, from the state if, uh, if it were a regional facility. And so at that point in time, we began, and plus, of course, it's, it's pretty obvious that, that what you've got here is you've got Inchotown River, Santa Fe River coming together at that point and you've got three rivers of the states, which is in the county and we'll look at some slides that shows that more, chill it with more light on that. But see that as, as being concerned from them from the standpoint of nutrients, uh, going into either one of those rivers as a outstanding groundwater. So that being said, we're just gonna show you some of the information that we looked at and went through, um, and putting together the facilities plan. What, uh, what you've got here is in the, in, in the yellow are what are called priority focus areas and those areas go to one spring or another. If you see this little blue slit here, that separates Inchotown Springs priority focus area from Devil's Ear Spring priority focus area, which is where the town of Fort White is in. But Devil's Ear Springs is down Long River, uh, and actually is along the Gilchrist County side, uh, pretty much sort of straight down this direction, uh, on the Santa Fe. This area here, what we're showing is again, we're showing the location where we would, uh, hope to put the wastewater treatment facility as well as the spray field for disposal. But what we wanted to show was that from a water quality standpoint, you've got all of these areas here and plus I will point out that this entire area is in the Santa Fe River, uh, BMAP, which is Best Management Action Plan, uh, for the Santa Fe River and has to do with nutrients. So you've got th- these reasons here and the reason that those matter, uh, so much is that from the standpoint of the starting, the starting wastewater treatment plant would be at 100,000 gallons per day. That the discharge from there, uh, because of the location in BMAP and BMAP, this is, will be three milligrams per liter, which is tertiary treatment or, you know, extended treatment, uh, that typically, I mean, you'd see coming out of a standard extended air wastewater plant, some of them come in six, twelve milligrams per liter. So we plan to use a facility, which is a different type of facility, I don't want to bore anybody, but this is a brief explanation. What we would do is we would use what's called a, uh, an MLE facility plant that what it would do is takes ammonia, puts it in an aerated section, you feed it, you feed it the oxygen, it changes the ammonia to nitrate and nitrite and then that goes into what's called anaerobic, which means there's no oxygen. It's a different type of bacteria, where that takes the nitrate and nitrite and then it off, it, it converts it to nitrogen gas and it off gases. And so that's how in that type of facility, and one of the concerns, obviously, from the standpoint of being in BMAP. Now positive, from a positive standpoint, it also makes it more, you know, more easily, uh, more, it, it more easier to obtain funding than if it weren't in this climate that we're in now. These are just some other slides where we looked at some information, just wanted to point them out. Again, uh, pound over here, three rivers is in here, this is the area that we're talking about, putting wastewater facility again in, in spray field. Just wanted to show that the blue is the flood plain, the hatch is the floodway, uh, on the Santa Fe River, this Inchotown up here and the, the tan is the 500 year. Shows that the area where we wanted to put this is not in it. Now, one thing it does show is that some of the areas within three rivers of the state are in the flood plain and that, that'll come in, I'm gonna bring this back up a little bit later, it's the reason I pointed out, but, but from, but most of the area, obviously Fort White, this area here, we want to put the plant facility aren't, aren't in the flood plain. We also took a look at, um, the wetlands. Same thing's true, all the wetlands run along either the Inchotown or the Santa Fe and no wetlands back in this area over here and really to speak of, other than the river, no wetlands, uh, in three rivers of the states as well.
Mr. Pop?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to put it over here where you can see better? Can you see on that?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Recently, and as I stated, I've submitted this before for springs grant. We submitted it again, we will once more submit it again. Uh, I also was told by Tim Banks, who heads up State Revolving Fund, um, Clean Water Program, I've known him about 30 years. He told me, called me up one day and said, you know, you need to submit for, for, uh, wastewater protection grant, it's another grant that was out. Uh, it was about, it was about three days off from the, when, when I need to get in. We put it together, we got it in, this was back in July and we're still waiting for any comments from it, but, but again, i- it's a situation where they've got limited funding, but you're gonna have to phase it. Uh, again, that's what we're, one of the things we were told, springs grant over twice too. They've got about 12 and 13 million dollars a year and about the most that you're gonna get is about one and a half million dollars. You say, well, that's, once you see the prices on some of the stuff, you say, well, that's not gonna get far. But what happens is, i- i- is if your phase one gets funded, they will continue to phase the, fund the rest of the phases and, and, and give you monies from then on out in both of these, uh, the, um, for springs grant and for wastewater protection grant. But that's not from the standpoint of getting the job done as far as getting the monies that are needed. As you can see right here, it's, it's, you know, that's not gonna, you know, it'll make a dent in it, but it's not gonna be big. Uh, what you see i- i- when it phased out here is that phase one includes the facility, the 100,000 gallon facility and includes a portion of the town that would include all the commercial, some residential and the institutional, which would be the schools. Um, the second phase would be some commercial, some residential. Phase three, uh, again, mostly residential. Then when we move to phase four, you enlarge the plant to begin to take in three rivers and Inchotown Springs State Park. Uh, that would be about 250,000 million gallons per day package plant. These are all package plants we can come and add them in. Again, same type of facility that's gonna keep the nitrogen, don't nitrogen down. The next phase would just be three rivers, more three rivers residential. Get to phase seven, you need another upgrade of the plant, 250,000, uh, gallons per day. Phase eights, three rivers and phase nines, the rest of it. Um, a- a- as you might assume, you're not gonna get this done in, you know, nine or 10 years, even, even though we should not have kept phases. I mean, it's gonna take a period of time, I guess, best guess would be, you know, you're looking, uh, over a period of time at a minimum of maybe 20 years and potentially, uh, potentially more than that. But, but again, if you got to start it and, and as you, as you go through it, you know, and, and people begin to see that, that the town, the county are serious about it, uh, the funding's gonna come. What we looked at is we went through this from an alternative standpoint is from collection system, we had two alternatives. One was using a gravity system. One was a low pressure system, grinder system. Uh, talking to Greg, I mean, I, I know they've got them over at Swanee, they've got them over at, uh, at Jenna and that area, got them in Horseshoe Beach. So some of you may be familiar with, with what those are. Uh, for wastewater treatment system, alternatives were, obviously you had to have a plant, so it was, alternative one was Fort White constructs the wastewater treatment plant with assistance from the county. Two was either Fort White or Columbia County would go it alone and construct it. And, and three is, you know, that nothing would happen, termination would be nothing. Just, uh, I know most of you probably have, um, know what a, a gravity sewer system is, but for those who don't, through the slide and what you've got is them obviously coming out of laterals from the homes and the more businesses, goes into a pipe that's going down gradient and, uh, and then when it goes down, it'll go into a pump station, also known as a lift station. It will then be pumped into either a force main, which will go to the plant, or it'll be pumped to the plant through the force main. This might go to another lift station, whatever. But that's, that's why it's called gravity is, is because initially it's all gonna go into a pipe that's gonna go to manholes. On the other hand, the, the low pressure grinder pump system is going to come out of laterals from the house, same way, but it's gonna go into a, basically a lift station that has one pump in it for residential, two pumps for institutional, schools and, um, commercial. So this would have a pump in it, it will go out to a force main, through that force main, it would need to go to another lift station or i- it could also go to, uh, uh, go to the facility, the facility itself. So that's just a little background, so you know what I'm talking about as I'm talking. Um, here's where the rubber meets the road, here's the cost. As we begin to look at this, this is for the gravity collection system, which again, as we discussed, includes, um, gravity sewer piping, manholes, uh, it's gonna eventually end up service laterals coming from the, coming from the homes, it's gonna e- e- eventually go to a lift station from those lift stations, it's gonna end up planting. If you're looking with the entire, and this includes everything, three rivers of the states and town of Fort White and Inchotown Springs, it's about 61.7 million dollars. Um, the E1 low pressure system, and I will cover this as we go, looks like, well, this is gonna be, you know, a better deal. It's, it's, uh, about 50, you know, million dollars, maybe 51. And what you've got there, as you can see, now, one of the things to keep an eye on, because I'm gonna bring this up later, is you have 2,118 complex grinder pumps and, and, and units and when one of them goes down, they just, you have to have about five, 10% of them in, in, in storage so that you come out there and that's what's recommended so that you, uh, as they fail, you can go out there and fix it. Uh, you're gonna have duplex systems for school or for, uh, uh, for commercial. Now, that being said, you've got issues, you, you gotta take care of it, you got to operate and maintenance. We calculated this, this is over 20 years, not per year, but 6.3 million dollars. Using E1 low pressure, we calculated about 8.1 million. Now that is based upon what they, the cost that they gave us, they being E1, to maintain the system. Well, maintaining this system in year one and we, in, in good faith, because that's what they gave us, we extended it out to 20 years. But the thing is, is maintaining, maintaining this in year one's gonna be different than year 10 or 15 when you've got pumps going, when you've got some, a bunch of pumps going out all the time and you gotta be out there replacing them constantly. So this, ba- it, this cost here, while based upon what they gave us, is a best case scenario. This is actually, we, we believe that this is gonna be much larger than this, uh, at the end of 20 year period as far as O and M and, uh, that's, you know, one of the reasons why we will, uh, reach the conclusion that we did. This is, uh, this cost for the wastewater treatment system, between 600,000 and 700,000 gallons per day, about 5.5 million dollars in, uh, current monies. We, uh, we believe that wastewater collection system alternative, even though it's more expensive, would be better to gravity system, there's less moving parts, less to maintain, less to deal with. Uh, you don't have, if you got a gravity system and it's stuck up, neck, stuck up in the flood zone, flood plain, you're not gonna end up, what you're not gonna end up with is, is a bunch of pumps going out, you may get some infiltration into the system, so you've got to treat more, but you, but that's, that's gonna be a lot better system to have a bunch of pumps flooded out. So we chose that and the wastewater treatment system, we believe that cooperate, the interloper, the cooperative agreement that the, uh, town and county have with each other, that two would be better than one trying to go after this from the standpoint of being able to get funding and also being able to operate and maintain the system. The cost of this, 67,243,998 dollars. Uh, Jacob said I could hold that, he said to the penny, right Jacob?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, it's, it's right. If you, whatever you missed by comes out of your salary, that's what Greg says. Here, we went in and offered and we calculated what the sewer rates would be, this based on 5,000 gallons and we compared it to McLennan. There's proposed 33 dollars here, based on 5,000 gallons a month. Jennings is 33, Bramford down the road here is 3304, High Springs is 378. These are some of the communities that are about the same size that you, that, that y'all deal with. So we wanted to compare these and show you that, that, that the rate that we're proposing at this point is comparable. Um, here, what you're, what you're seeing and that that's a little bit smaller, hopefully you can read it well, but what we've ended up doing here is we've taken that rate and we've said, okay, here in the town, this is, this is the volume that a typical residential of water, that a typical, typical residential user would use, 7890. And, uh, institutional or commercial user would use 20,000. So from there, we got the monthly, we got the monthly bills based upon the number of facilities and the number of residential that we have in three rivers of the state. And so we, we went through all of that and, and based upon that, we came up with, uh, what you would have is you would have a total revenue of, of 1,220,000 dollars.
And that's complete build out of that?
That's complete build out. You are, you are correct, Rob. Uh, that being said, let's talk a little bit about, since you see that, about how you fund it. I've talked about springs grant, that's one way, uh, that you can go after it. You're, you're going to get no more than probably about one and a half million dollars a year out of that if you are, even if you are approved, uh, which I believe that you would be in this situation. I think it's something that, you know, that there, there can be some, and by pressure, I don't mean pressure, but, but you can certainly show it to, you know, to your legislators such as you did with the water system here. Um, wastewater protection grants that I've already discussed. So the major way to do it is gonna be through a state revolving fund loan. This loan at this point in time, based upon what we were told by Tim and Greg Allison, who've been assistants on this, is 20 year loan, will be 0% interest and it's 80% principal forgiveness, which means that 80% of the loan will be forgiven at the end of the day. Uh, another, uh, grant that, that we try to get federal grant, try to get money from, and, and we'll be able to, would be, this will cover, 319H grant will cover the cost of the lateral coming from, uh, coming from the homes and also of abandoning the set of tanks. So that, that would be something that, that would be covered by grant monies and that the, uh, county would not have to bear the brunt of. Um, so we, we wanted to look at, okay, well, let's look at the loan payback. This is for as it states up here, the entire project. So you're looking at 20% of that 60 something, 67 million. So you end up with this much. So 20% alone, 0% interest rate, you've got 672,440 dollars a year. This is your annual O and M. Uh, so your income acquired, add those two together, it's 989,066 dollars. Your estimated average revenue, based upon what we looked at before, is around 1.5 million. And obviously you subtract this from that, you end up with an estimated yearly income. This is a build out of 538,981 dollars. This includes, accounts for 2.1% inflation rate. That's what we also have here, uh, the first three phases, which would be the first three that you have is, is the loan payback analysis for the town of Fort White phases. Um, that's a, a third of it, uh, of the phases. So you can go through the same process here and what you end up with is for those first three phases, you have an estimated yearly income of 270,000, 73,691 dollars. Um, at that point, we would like to, uh, throw the floor open for any questions that anyone, uh... anyone, uh, from the commission council may have at this point in time, and without whomever can answer the best, uh, answer the question.
All of the now, she just gave on that phase, three phase conclusion, that's a hundred percent contribution.
Of the, of the three, of the three in the Towne Fort White, as well as the, it, 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 as, as well as Commissioner Murphy, it, it includes the hundred thousand gallons, treatment plant, and the spray field handle.
Where exactly is that loan called, Rob?
Um. It's on Jordan, it's on Jordan, did you head out of town when you did?
Right beside your box.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Oh, gosh, here we go, good one. No box piano. Looking at your proposal, I agree with you, the gravity low system for maintenance issues and other, I think that's the problem, the biggest point that I think we should look at the most, though, I'm gonna have to.
It, it's, that, that's what we came to, Rocky, I mean, it, it, at first it was rough, flush, you know, you say, well, oh, it's eleven million dollars. But the E, the, the, the low pressure systems historically have a, you know, have, have a history of, you know, they've come out, they've got low price, and you see them just because of a number of reasons, but then once you get well into the, the, the operation and maintenance, you begin to see, you know, the payback on it.
The, uh, the profit and loss that's just up there, uh, the phase three and all the phases, but that, that was just based on the loan itself, that wasn't taking into account any grants we got?
No, i- i- if you had grants, that obviously would, would, would cut that, that would just be, uh, that's, that's just, you took everything to twenty percent.
Go back to your slide where you had the, the pump, the payout, and it all from the loan right there.
Is it, that, that was the one you? Commissioner Williams, you're talking about this one? Okay, yeah.
All right, go over there again, my man.
Okay, yes, sir. Um, this is, this cost here is, is twenty percent of the sixty-seven million dollars, because you've got eighty percent principal forgiveness, but you're gonna have to pay twenty percent, twenty percent back, and that's a zero percent interest. Uh, this is annual payback, based on zero percent interest, of this over a twenty-year period.
Okay.
Okay, this is the O and M, uh, based upon the numbers that we showed earlier.
Okay.
And so what we're saying is, is the annual payback of the loan, plus the annual O and M, is the income that's gonna be required to, to run the facility.
Right.
And then we say here, based upon the thirty-three dollars and the, the, um, the, uh, rate for commercial and institutional, that the amount of money that, that, and it's a buildout. Now, I understand what I'm saying, it's a twenty-year buildout.
Total buildout.
You got, right, you got one million, five hundred twenty-eight thousand, forty-seven dollars, so I'm subtracting this from this, that's where the income is coming from.
Okay. So, so we're essentially gonna be short on the twenty years, it's a twenty-year loan, huh?
Yeah, it is, yes.
But we'll be short with, with grants and other things.
Yeah, you're not gonna be sure of, of what this shows.
You still show a yearly income of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Right, this is.
Even if it's marketing money with the grant.
Yeah, your annual income, after twenty years. I mean, this, it, let's say at the end of.
After twenty years, it's ten million, so we.
This is, this is like at the end of three phases. So at the end of three phases, you're going to have two seventy-three, six ninety-four, with the, with the.
Along with the other.
Well, no, this is, this is, for instance, what we showed is nine phases, this, i- i- the one before shows all nine phases built outs. What this shows is just the Towne Fort White, which is built outs, and then with just the Towne Fort White, that's, that's the amount right there.
Correct. The whole point is the projected revenue will pay for the project more.
That's correct.
What's the town line estimate for phases one through three, which would be the Towne Fort White up there?
Uh, well, we could get, if, if the, the town decided, then the county decided to go in that direction, we have to submit this in complete form to get design and construction money to get on next February, February twenty-twenty-two. And, and, and so at that point in time, we will begin to do design and construction, obviously permitting. I guess my guess would be for the three phases, Greg, what do you think, somewhere between five and ten years, I mean?
I'd say five, two.
Okay.
And you think that also they have to get, get some, some grant money?
Oh, I, I don't, I don't think there's any doubt. I mean, once they see, once they see that, that, that the town and the county are going to get into interlocal, once they see the town is, is, is going forward, that, that it's a serious matter with them this time, they're gonna move on forward, that, uh, and to see you doing so with an SRA, I, I think the, the opportunity to get both, both Springs grant and wastewater protection grant monies increase, you know, ten fold.
So when you sort of, and, not like cost of single rear money, I, I, it's not even the twenty percent, but the worst case scenario is twenty percent.
Right, yeah, I, I mean, 'cause, 'cause again, like you're saying, what you're focusing on, you're focusing on over a period of time, is cutting that thirteen million dollars that you gotta pay, you, you're looking at cutting that out with grant money. And, and so that's, that's, that's what you're tackling. And I, to be honest with you, I mean, that, like I say, when you get Springs grant, they give you one phase, they give you the rest of the phases, especially, and it's, it's the SRA folks, it's a different section, but it's the SRA folks that are handling Springs grant, i- is the same folks in a different section are handling the SRA loan. So they work together very closely.
If you would, uh, when we were over there talking to, to, they give us a scenario where we already had the engineering and the, and the boat ready, oh, now if we would refund some of that out of the pocket to start with, are we still looking at the five or six-year rate?
You could, you're gonna move it up enough, every couple of years, I mean, I'm gonna move it up some, I.
It's not gonna be.
I think what's gonna control that more than anything is gonna be the funding cycle from, from state. You can't, you can move up a few months, but you can't move up multiple years in that.
I know she told us when we was over there, if we presented a plan where the engineering was already completed, that the, that a lot of times there was money available at that point.
Well, the completion of the study goes a long way toward that, that they voted for, that the town got funding for, so this, this will go a long way, having this plan done. After that, more details you can give, the better your chances of coming.
Yeah, 'cause what, what the next step, what the next step is, Rocky, is, is like I said, in February, with this completed, then they put you on the docket for designing, for, for designing permitting monies. And so you get the plans together, and then after that, you're taking the next step into, into construction monies.
I don't think, when we talk about grant money, I, 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 I believe grant money is separate from special appropriation.
Yes, yes, sir. I mean, uh, yeah, special appropriation is not something that we've listed, but it's cer- certainly.
Yeah, so al- along with the, uh, the availability to, uh, receive grant money, we can also lobby some special appropriation, uh, for addition of dollars to go in and fund the property.
Most definitely, and especially because of the location of it being both in a BMAP and a PSA, it, uh, and with the folks at DCP and then with the, the folks that are with the governor, I mean, at this point, the way things are, I, that, that goes a long way.
When, when we look at the area as a whole, I think there's a possibility of, of, uh, of damage of set tank in the whole developer area than it was from the, uh, uh, deterioration of the raw quality of something happening at the, uh, at the, at the dividing side there with other potential. So I, I think the state for all that planning and buying that side are the potential incentives. I, I think when you're looking at this pure grass of area, what we're trying to do here, it carries on way within the, the footprint of the, of the land, of, of the body, of, of mine.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree, I think one of the, one of the things that's really incumbent upon what, what you're saying is, is to bring, bring the legislators, legislatures in the kitchen to it, because I just think it's something that, you know, unless you don't point it out to them, because like you say, in the second you point it out, it's like, yeah, this sits right up there between Santa Fe and the Kentucky, all these springs running down in Santa Fe, it, it's pretty much an upright.
And there would be no, it would, it wouldn't be optional, people would have to go on, because I, we had this in Horseshoe, and, you know, we don't have sewer in Horseshoe, but, so it wouldn't be an option if, if you abandoned your set tank and go on.
They would say, if that's, if there are any bodies that would be something y'all would have to implement, yes. They're not gonna fund it otherwise.
And, and under, under the, uh, uh, scenario, there's, well, there are money to keep grant plans, to switch people from, uh, the set tank to the, uh, uh, public sewer system, and tapping fees, all that would be done, but, um, you, you're gonna catch twenty, if you can't ask for all this money to be able to do what we're trying to do here, and don't make it mandatory once it's completed to hook to it. And don't call anything to hook to it, you know, we, we, we're doing that through grant money, or someone else, someone else having to, uh, keeping the home on, uh, having to spend that money to hook on to the system.
Right, and, and I, I, I just think, you know, at this point in time, you can look and see the direction that residential set tank systems in a BMAP and a PSA have gone, and, and with all of, you know, I mean, you know, members of the council and the board know what I'm saying, i- is that, is that it's just, uh, it's going in the direction that, that with all the inspection stuff like that, the cost of maintaining that set tank system and, and, you know, operating from year to year is just going to become more and more.
Everybody is aware that we have new rules for set tank, and it costs you a lot more for the set tank.
About sixty percent more, is about what you're looking at.
And, yeah, let me ask you this, on, on the, you say there you got grants for abandonment of set system, now what is the abandonment, they, they cost for you to have in a heat? I've, I've done it on, it's not a heat area, but what, what do you have to do with the set tank? Rocky?
Puffing out, maybe, maybe.
Fill up dirt.
And, and, and also, I would like to add, what, what David commented a while ago, about the prime quarter, about sixty percent. Another cost involved is that you have to have two inspections a year on residential stores, and inspection years on commercials, all these new sets, and an operator for them, you have to ban. So all of the set tank in the PSA areas is fixed to get it fast.
When does that go affect, Rob?
Well, it's already affect, you have to put these systems in to do this.
On less than one acre.
On less than one acre.
And that's majority of Three Rivers Estates, that's why I believe this is very important. You're gonna get rid of, how many, sixteen hundred set tank systems on the Santa Fe and Nippon Rivers?
But they're, they're fixing to implement, it's following right behind this, that even, even repaired, if you repair things.
Any repair, you have to go everywhere. Right, it hasn't happened yet, but me and Rocky have been discussing this, it's probably coming in, we, we're figuring about in the next five years, probably anywhere in Columbia County, no, regardless of acres, you're probably gonna be required to do it.
So, and, really, even if you, I know this isn't part of the plan, but even if you did have to charge people, even if they did have to ban, they're saving money, they're gonna save a lot of money in the end.
In the end. It's gonna cost them about five hundred dollars a year, just for the two inspections he, uh, talked about, and the operator, I mean, just to have it on your property, it's gonna cost you five hundred dollars.
It's just getting, at, at, at a sewer bill, it's about, or more than a year, right?
And then you don't have any other expense, it's all the lust in.
So you, you don't have anything, you don't have to worry about it.
Right, exactly.
But, but I want to tell you, it's, it's hard to sell that, that's, that's gonna be something we're gonna have to.
That's your doubt.
Well, it, it, it's not gonna be.
Drop the whole county, Rocky.
It's tough, man. Or you want to say, uh, uh, our hand thing, the new set tank, you gotta do this and do that, once that system is in place, they cannot provide that service of maintenance to that old set tank system, although the stature, if you have a public water sewer system in place, you can't get a permit to repair that old set tank.
That is correct.
So it won't matter, they comes off anyway.
Yes.
Nothing we can do about that, that's that.
But they're repairing them, like.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm talking about once the system is in place, you can't get a permit to, to repair it.
That's fair.
Yep.
Do your, uh, maintenance numbers, take into account the additional staff we have to hire, would you go out and do this? Well, yeah, I mean.
Whether we hire staff or, or form an hourly component?
Yeah, it's a salary component. I mean, the way we look, the way we looked at it, um, is that we, we looked at how much it was gonna take an operator to come in and, and operate it, and then the consideration on top of that, the salary component was for somebody to, to maintain, and obviously that's gonna go up, which is what I was saying, on the E1 grinder pump systems, but, you know, i- it's, it's not gonna be quite as high on, on the gravity, so, and that's reasonable, but yes, it, it works.
But you're saying that, the way you would do this, is you do the town first, and then you would concentrate in Three Rivers, along the river, and then the, any areas inside that, I think it floods. So, you know, the people that's up on the hill, what I call out of the flood, you know, they're, you're ten, twelve, thirteen years down the road, you know, maybe even further, you know, 'cause you would, you would want to protect your, your rivers and your.
Probably part of the grants.
Right, and that would be where you'd go first, then you'd move in, move on up to the rest of it. So really, other than the Towne Fort White and along your rivers, you know, you're talking about issues that you're not gonna have all the way down the road, you know, here and down there.
Oh, right, and, and none of us know how, how the, how the law is going to progress ten years from now.
Right.
You have to slide out, yes.
Greg, at the current time, the port of the spring, the way the Springs grants operate and work, uh, this will somewhat tie your hands when we go, if we get funding, do the loan, seek, uh, other spring grants, uh, most times, you know, you, you can't apply for more spring grants in the same county, you know, for different projects, you know, something unrelated, it's kind of like what you did, you know, for us down at Council Street.
Well, that's why I think it's, you know, the town's gonna lead here, the town can apply for the grant, the governor's gonna apply for another grant. That's how you kind of, you work that out.
Yeah, that's the benefit of, of doing a fourth year with the Towne Fort White. David?
I just wanted to, um, mind you, you're not at any one point going to be borrowing sixty-seven million dollars. You're gonna borrow just what you need for that to pay. One, you're not gonna be at single point where you're paying that back at one time, graduated over twenty years, you have to think about it in terms of time value of money as well.
Right. I say it now, you're just kind of kicking one sharp Kevin Kirby's side.
Proportion of this, that proportion, you done it today, that's what it would cost.
That's correct.
No other quicker than.
We, we added in, we added in.
They added all the people.
We, we had a two point one percent inflation. We had, you know, what I did was I, what I did was I took twenty years, past twenty years, averaged that, and we used that as.
What I'm saying is that dollar amount you stock for the loan repayment, that is if you borrow all the money you want.
That, that's correct.
So since you're only gonna be borrowing it in smaller chunks, loan repayment is small a lot of time.
So, so basically what we would be doing is working with, with, with grant money, and if we needed loan money, we would borrow money at that point to do something that was, that was necessary at that time, too. But hopefully, we're working on eighty, ninety percent rate. Any other questions?
Well, I mean, Rocky, the loan's not a non-starter either, if you look at the revenue.
If the revenue.
Right, you're gonna make more revenue than requiring to pay the loan, so.
I agree, I believe it. They've shown you where you can pay the loan back, with the revenue of the, of the system. Where, where, where do we go from here?
Thank you just information to y'all to, this is the first time everybody's seen some of this. Uh, previously, we, we commissioned stuff in the Towne Fort White, so today is that. Uh, Bob corrected, I'm wrong, but, uh, we're taking input today, we have to turn around and transmit this document to DEB, they'll go through and they'll review it as well, they've got agencies they send it to, and October, maybe November's delayed. it to, and October, maybe November is the latest.
Yes.
The town will need to make a decision as to how they want to see it, so that we could then turn it in by December twenty seventh.
Everything's gotta be tied up, nice pretty boat, by December twenty seventh, or we could go before the funding.
So what I would suggest is give the town a month or so to think about it and look at it, look at it, we'll look at it, and then we'll schedule another joint meeting, and at that time, we'll decide how we're going for the meeting.
And based on the timeline that he said where we need to be, and keep this, put this in motion, we gotta have an agreement, I mean, town Fort White and Fort County. I think if there is a feeling that this is the way we wanna start looking at this, that the attorneys, which is the town of Fort White and the Fort County, start putting together a, alright, I'll get all local, I don't know where I was, I'm local, and we, and then start drafting a town local, so that the attorney's gonna make changes, the town Fort White's gonna make changes, the county, and we can do that as we need, but if there's a something that this is the way we wanna have, I think the town locals should be working on as we move along.
But the former, the interlocal that we have in place now, does it?
No, sir, it wouldn't, and I think, you know, it's very important to understand you'll be borrowing money, and even North Port Professional Services proposal shows three different ways to go, you know, the county face board, town face board, county, and the town. You need to determine what the prerated shares are gonna be, how you get to buy things up. The easiest example you guys have is actually the SVTA, you've got three different counties that came together and created this new entity, and y'all funded per capita every year, okay? Those are the kind of things, I think Commissioner Williams on the right wavelength, those are kind of like thirty thousand foot decisions have to be made, are we gonna run this as two separate legislative bodies that just kind of work together, are we gonna create a third body, you know, there's a lot of things that have to just be worked out, and frankly, I'd like, if there was some direction in that regard today, I think that'd be helpful for me, I can't necessarily speak for Mr. Curbeline, but I'm pretty sure I'm right, that he would like some direction in that regard too. We can go ahead and start formulating for you guys what the legal options are to either create the entity, or if you don't want to create an entity, any other option, because they'll be separate.
Another thing, we need to throw the con of all the options.
That's my point, is if you give us some direction to go do that, we'll say, hey, you've got option one, where you have a third entity, you got option two, where y'all are both in this even Steven, we got ways we can present that.
Council, y'all good for that? If we don't go with the third, how is the town tied up once it leaves phase three, I think? How would the town be tied into it? We can't go with that option.
That's correct, so that's part of why you would do an interlocal agreement, analogy, Mr. Curbeline used to be a little while ago, it's like getting married, and what we're gonna do is a prenup, where it says, this is how we're gonna operate. And some of them, they work pretty good, at some point, phase three's done, phase three's paid for, and now we're in the utility business together, and so how we're gonna do that, make sure that stays fair for thirty years, so it stays fair.
So probably.
By the reaction, I see what's good about it.
I stole it, we won't hard all year to do the prenup.
I stole it.
Not you.
Basically, what I've seen and what I've heard in the past meetings, a regional utility between the town of Fort White and the county would be the best option.
It is an option, and I think we feed these numbers into that option and talk about, you talk about borrowing a lot of money, but you're also talking about generating a lot of revenue, so how does that work in a regional utility structure? There's statutory regional utilities we can set up, that we've talked about that, we just kind of hand the keys over to this other entity, there's ways we can craft a regional utility through an interlocal, sort of like the SVTA, there's ways y'all could do this where you stay separate.
So, so saying all that, I think the way, and this is just my, me personally, the way I see this moving forward, is creating a separate board over the utility with maybe a couple of commissioners, a couple of council members, and, you know, what is your, county manager or something like, y'all give me some info on this.
Well, I think what the attorneys are trying to solicit from both boards today is a direction to go back and bring forth all those such options too, it's whether, I mean, not dedicated one right now, what to bring back, you know, the three options or four, I mean, if they come back, I think that's all they're thinking right now, is direction from both, consists from both boards to allow them to go do that.
Yeah, and that's the reason I made that comment, the opportunity to give the devil to start working on that and start waiting, all the way to a week, reaching a deadline that they have to have to move forward on, we'll have that in place.
Yes, sir.
And I move that we authorize the county attorney and Fort White have to do the city attorney, county attorneys, to start putting together the options and creating the type of board we need to enter into an interlocal agreement to work together to buy the utility system as far as wastewater in the south end of county, the town of Fort White.
Okay, you got a motion, is that on paper, is that?
Uh, uh.
You'll have to drag down the attorney to.
Doesn't the council have to take a separate vote? Council wouldn't have to take a separate vote.
Do we need to take a separate vote? Separate vote?
I'll make a motion to give Mr. Curbeline directive to work us up a interlocal agreement with the county and bring it back and present it to us, give us our options, please.
Okay. Okay. And I'll have, Mr. Curbeline working up the plan for us, bringing it back, proven. Okay.
So I'm asking for Greg a question, okay? Yeah, I'll do it too. Greg, I know that this may affect how they bring us back, is there a better, I know that one option was Fort White didn't do anything, or we did everything, or we did it together, is the grant process, does the town of Fort White have better grant access, or county have, I want to make sure we let the lawyers know that, if there's some entity, the way we do it will get better grants, in other words, you know.
Everything we've set up so far, everything we've been forming the grant agencies, is it'd be better for the town of Fort White to be relieved.
That's what I.
They're gonna have a better chance of getting that.
And I want to make sure we know that with our options.
Greg, what timeline on your, to give, I think they'll have to walk.
Oh, we've got, we've got, we've got to have a definitive action by the town, so we can turn this report in on December twenty seventh.
Yeah, the report's gotta be turned in by December, well, the final report's gotta be turned in by the twenty seventh, also, you have to have everything tied up concerning the payment of the feasibility study and everything with DEP, they require that to be tied up in a nice boat, and then, once that's done, those two things is all it requires for then in February, February ninth, I believe, for them to put it on the agenda. And it's just formal, to be honest with you, as long as everything's all t's crossed and eyes are dotted, I mean, they'll grant the design and the structure.
I got a question, Mr. Curbeline. With all the advertising that's gotta be done, is, are we gonna have enough time in four months to put this all together?
I think you'll have enough time to address the options, I'll meet with Mr. Foreman as soon as he's available today, and we'll, and I'll discuss the issues as far as calendaring, see how we want to provide the work. We've already done an interlocal between the two end throats for water, the public water systems, Mr. Foreman and I have already handled an interlocal agreement together back two thousand eighteen for actually wastewater and sewer treatment collections, so it's just a matter of us getting together, and I think that we could have something done within a matter of weeks, then we're going to need the administration to look at it, and it doesn't do any good for us to bring you back a template that has a lot of blanks, if you're, the administrators haven't looked at it to talk about numbers, so I'm thinking of it a lot like what we've already done together, Mr. Foreman, and then what I believe you, Mr. Williams, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Keen, we're all in the county admin offices talking about the actual details and the nuts and bolts of your water treatment, water system, so that whenever it comes back to the respective boards, you will have enough details to actually have it in numbers and talk those. So that's a long-winded answer to, that I think this day we'll have it done in a matter of weeks, then we need to meet with the administrators.
So Joe, when do we need to have another joint meeting? What are we looking at timeline on that to have another joint meeting to try to get inside on how to complete?
Ms. Rogers, just hold off on setting that date today, with the understanding probably later in September, depending on how fast we get numbers and information back from administration, because I do agree with Mr. Curbeline, we want to show you something very close to finished products in these options, you know, disagreement would help you set up regional utility, disagreement is something different, so we're gonna have to kind of use a dividing rod and figure out where this is gonna take us, but I would say September, maybe as late as early October.
You're up there, gotta be some time about, end of October. Gotta give them a couple of months, and y'all, the board's a couple of months to digest. Okay, all right, well, we'll set a meeting here, so we're gonna move on to water at this time?
Yes, sir.
By the way, I, I agree.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Maybe Jake done a lot of it up there.
He coached, Jake coached me up, I mean, that's what we're talking about. So concerning the water, what we've done here is we're, again, this is showing you options and costs, we know recently we've seen the legislative appropriation, the town did, of a million dollars, and what the issue is, y'all know better than I do, since I live in Florida, you say, then y'all live here, but here's where the wells are, and the issue is that the town has experienced disinfection byproduct issues, color issues, odor issues, things that you would expect from water, groundwater that was under influence from surface waters, and that's what we're looking at, the way to solve this is to find another location for water holes, and that's what we, what I've got right here, we've looked at several options, cost of them out, we're throwing them out here today for your discussion purposes, that's all we've done, anything else could be thrown out as well. But we looked first at Ellisville, this is an option where you don't have to put in any wells, you don't have to buy any more property, it would start here Bailey Street, line would run down to eighteen, run down to eighteen, and come in here to plant, that's a little over nine miles. The second option is, is the town was given this piece of property up here by the Spawney River Water Management District, and you would have to put wells in on this one, but again, you wouldn't have to purchase property, and it would just come in from there, it's about four miles, come into the facility. We also, what we wanted to do was look at something, maybe that was a little closer, so right here, we've got a piece of property that's just north of the ball field, and again, this doesn't have to be this piece of property, but this is a piece of property that we picked, because of the location and the size, because it's got to be big enough that we can have a well filled protection area, it's gotta have exclusion zone for, you know, for ordinance, it's gotta have six hundred feet, six hundred foot well filled protection area, radius, so what this looks at here, that's about a mile out, and then we look to, you know, it's up two miles out, just as an example, that will be up here, say two miles would be about the intersection of Southwest Eden Church and Forty Seventh. That being said, this is, these are bare bones costs, they're getting the raw water from here to the existing, from the location, by here, I mean, the location that you're looking at here, to the existing plant, this is from Ellisville, starting at Bailey Street, it's a twelve inch water line, and that cost would be around five point nine, six million dollars. The second one, a big one, the water management district property, again, you don't have to put, you don't have to buy any property, but you do have to put in new wells, and that's about four miles, that cost is about two point six million dollars. If you look at a piece of property about two miles out, and again, that can be in a radius, they don't have to be to the northwest, we certainly don't want to go toward the river, all right, so the thing here would be, is you would have to buy a piece of property, and what we figured is, calculated is about thirty acres, it'd be about enough to provide a well filled protection area, and so what you end up with here is, you know, we figured in thirty acres, at about two hundred sixty thousand dollars, so two miles out, that'd be about one point nine million dollars, and this is a piece of property, we looked at, that specific piece of property, about, it's about a mile out, a little bit less, and that one, in purchasing property, will be about one point four million dollars. Again, it's bare bones, putting in new wells, taking that raw water, pumping it over to the existing water plant, you've got a million dollars right now, obviously, there are other maintenance of funding, water management district has some monies, you got river grants, you got various things that you can do, but those are, and again, these are just four options, we wanted to show you something on it, so that you'd have a starting place to talk back, and again, at this point, we just throw those four questions in discussion of these.
Well, here's my case, I'll send it to the board also, there's a full option, there are going with, from lady one, one more, one to two million, two to three million, and then five, six million, although it said five to six million, I support number one, and the reason I support number one is open up so much territory from Ellisville, Fort White, that you can have utility there and grow the utility system along that way. If you don't use, you cut the development in this end of the county by not providing water and syrup that we should be talking about, because of sensitivity of what's under the top of the ground, and to me, it makes sense that we have a water system in Ellisville that we have a thousand gallons of water on the ground, because the use, the use is not where it need to be at this time, and this is a good way to open up that whole area of Ellisville, Fort White, future development.
And we looked at, we looked at, we did some preliminary calculations, and we looked, with twelve inch line, you wouldn't be able without putting in a booster pump to get the water from Ellisville or Fort White, would not require, might require maybe some chlorine booster if you were going to offer it to, you know, in between the two locations, but just to bring in Fort White, we would not require some.
What if you started adding people on as you're going in, that what you need to add?
Well, again, yeah, Ronnie, I mean, what you would have to do, is that's the reason I said, you know, you're gonna lose your chlorine residual at some point, you're probably gonna have to factor in a chlorine booster station somewhere on, there may be two, but yeah, you're right, you're not gonna be able, if you're adding people on, you're not gonna You're not gonna be able, if you're adding people on, you're not gonna be able to, this one, but. Just call out the four scenarios. We've got a lot of different variations of them. You know, one, you know, we have to drill well one way, the other way. In your opinion, timeline, which one do you think would be the quickest solution? I mean, we're, we're in bad shape down here. I mean, and we're at, we're at the county's mercy. I mean, it's. I mean.
I personally am open for any suggestions, but, but, but just the timeline.
Yeah. Obviously, you're gonna have to permit the line on any of them. So you're, so you're gonna have to permit the line. There are, there, on three of them, you're gonna have to put in well.
Right.
So it's, it's gonna be, I don't see, and Greg might have a different opinion, but, but I don't, I, I don't see one from the other one, especially the last three is having, it's gonna be about the same time point. It's, it's.
Right.
And the other one, what you're gonna end up with from construction standpoint, it's gonna bring you into the point, it's just gonna be about the same time point. It's, it's, it's not mine.
I have a little bit different opinion.
I knew he would.
Mine right away or buying property from a government entity can be troublesome at times. If that went slip, that part would be quit.
Right.
But you have one hiccup in that, somebody don't want to sell or whatnot, and then you got problems. And it can delay quite a bit. The quickest, I think, is, is probably gonna be connect, connect to Ellisville, that's a quick, that's a quick permit. It's straightforward construction. We're not having to deal with getting the well drilled and that's, that's one contractor. Get the plant, I mean, getting the line laid may be another contract from the plant. I guess that, every now.
I, I think just the administration of those, those things, just change that.
One thing I've been, you're thinking about right now, just, just a thought just hitting me. Do we want to spend money running top or do we want to spend money buying property? I don't know. That's something we got to decide, you know? Because I can tell you, I have checked into the property here that we was talking about here Fort White. You're not gonna buy that property for two hundred sixty thousand dollars. Now, I ain't saying there's not other property around that you can buy for that, but the piece you were looking at down there, I was told twenty-five thousand dollars. Like, if you buy that whole thing, you're looking at a million dollars to that property. You know? So.
That's almost about that forty acres. I think that was about eighteen.
I, 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 Mr. Jacob was not having Chris really.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I was told, he's asked, he's on. So I, I, I just wanna be out in the open and say, and say, you know, I don't believe your money you got in here is gonna buy that piece. I ain't saying there's not another piece around that you can buy for that. But that's something you do want to keep in mind, do you want to spend money running top? Where are you gonna put it here, or buy it?
The property from the, quite a lot of acres is that. That also, and I think that would be expansion of a larger well, in the future. And property's free. And what's the cost of that?
The water management district.
How much?
Water management district.
What was?
That, that, that cost, that cost was two point six, I believe.
Yeah, two point eight, I think. That included the wells and that in the pot.
Two point six, that's, that's.
The crowd.
And all?
Yes. The crowd. Or you got the property, you got to go, you got to drill wells and you got to play the spot.
Greg, I'll probably accept that. Is it reasonable to say that a good bit of this would be right away?
Yes.
As far as laying the pipe and whatever?
Most of it being right away. There was some area that we would need to still need to probably secure some regions through there because it's on some narrow roads and don't have a lot of right away on.
So Ellisville would be all right away, right?
Yes.
The crowd has something to add, you'll go ahead.
Just for your knowledge, this particular project, it is a drinking quality drinking water project, is ARPA eligible? You can't use your.
Yep.
Oh.
I just got a question, I'm sure you all, normally when Swan River Water Management owns a piece of property, it's because of an required due to a protection issue, you know, whether the sink holes on the area or whatever. Is that hundred acres or wherever that piece of property is, is it suitable for wells or on certain portions?
Their, their property was bought before a well found.
They're already, they're already bore shot. They, they said they already did all of the testing and everything, so it's ready.
It was bought quickly, bought well built for Fort White years ago, is what I'm saying.
Well, that, that make a piece of property, that'd accept a lot more wells and driven in the future.
Than the two. Yes, yes. Because, again, what it comes down to is, is it comes down to the six hundred foot radius?
Yeah. You have a big gap.
Well, couldn't you, for, for Mr. Williams' concern, couldn't you still tie in service that into the, the area? I mean, I know you wouldn't reach all the way to Ellisville, but you're, you're almost in Ellisville, we got properties that.
If you want to run water back to the northwest from this well filled site?
Right.
You'd have to move water treatment plants out.
Yeah, you'd have to. If you go, if you come from Ellisville, it's already treated water. That's right, that's right.
We don't get treated water when we use the water.
That's right.
Property is not treated till you tell.
Yeah, we don't get treated water. When we're running that pipe.
It's just a total wet well.
It's just a well.
Yes. So then you can take the remaining portion of that, re-up, I mean, re-man this up.
Yes.
The only thing I want to, to board, and now you got, yeah, like lady, she said, the reason we are in the water here is in Ellisville. We had that same opportunity, and we actually considered to put up a meter at Oasis, Oasis Bar out there. And we were gonna run a water line from Oasis to Ellisville, with all that territory for future development and future revenue. And we could never work out how we can whip it to the right city. So we had to go in and draw, draw our own wells and, and I hate to see us not take the opportunity to expand that system, uh, uh, into Fort White and be able to utilize the best potential for that whole system that we have there. I, I have one question, how many gallons of flow did you provide a day off the twelve inch pipe, Ellisville and, and King Ford, why was it going off?
Like, then we just, we just used the flow that Fort White used, not, as what we calculated. Now, it will obviously roster carry a lot more water than, okay. But what you end up with is, is, is friction loss and, and, and you end up at a point that, that, yeah, you're gonna need a booster pump. I mean, cause if you reduce it down to an eight inch, then what you're gonna end up with is needing a booster.
So, so I guess my question would be, are we opening up any more areas with twelve inch line and type of white?
You can, but you may need, well, I said, you may need, you have to do future improvements to be able to maintain that. You get to a point that there's capacity in the line now, but somebody comes up there and they want to put in thousands of homes, we might, have all that extra capacity, so we can boost it by adding a booster pump at that point.
So even, you can get the volume, you need maybe that pressure as well?
Eventually, yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you can get, yeah, with the booster pump, good. And again, you can get volume, but you're probably gonna need chlorine booster as well because you're not gonna have it, it's needed for thousands too.
Cause the way the system would work doing that now, all we're needing to do is get the water to the plant in Fort White and get it into tank. That's all we gotta do. It just, it could just sit there. They pull it, their system has high service pumps that pulls it out of that and sends it into the city. So they boot, that is a booster station.
So there's gonna be no treatment down here at all?
Yes, that's where you treat it at. It would go through your system, but all we've got, all we need is enough pressure to, to get the water to the plant, sort of thing. We don't have to boost it up to get it into the house or into the business, but the town's system does that.
I thought we talked four words about treatment. It will become a treatment, but it will probably need to be boosted up.
Yes.
Okay, at that point, I got it.
From the pressure sample, you, you, Ronnie, I mean, it'll, it'll, as far as treating water, you'll have to treat water, you just be fastening, putting the ground storage name fast.
You want to be adding more treatment in Fort White?
You may need to tweak the chlorine.
That's right.
Certainly, certainly by the time it gets here. So the people between Fort White and Ellisville, we can service people there.
Right.
Too. It would be treated there.
It would be treated. But he said we might have to add.
But like, so we went to these other places, it's not gonna be treated, right to the tank and.
Yeah, it's gonna be all, all those treatments would be done in other.
Comes from Ellisville, it's treated already.
If you're a mile, two miles, three miles down Bailey Road, you're, you're fine. When we get down to eighteen, or we come down eighteen, coming back to Fort Town, our chlorine residual might drop out, you can back with a booster pump down there to boost the chlorine back up.
And I mean, you have chlorine booster pump, it's not like that's a, you know, high price item. I mean, it's.
But if you do, if somebody went down there and developed a, a, if I'm correct in saying, I think, you either, you either many villages, four hundred houses there. Although we're sitting there filling this tank up also, then you're gonna get drawn down over there. I guess my biggest thing is, you know, I've had to feel pretty comfortable with whether the line will supply body, if I want to say, once you feed it all down halfway here and then.
Well, you're, right, but I mean, what you've got is, is, is your demand, depending on where it is, your demand is what's going, what's going to impact that. Cause if, if your demand is way down toward, toward the Fort White end of the line, then yeah, you've got a lot of water that's gonna have friction head loss. If your demand is like a third of the way from Bailey, then you've only got that demand in, in that section. So you've got a lot less, less friction head loss if it's not this far down. So it, 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 we would change, it would impact it depending on where the construction is going to be along the line. And it, I mean, it's possible, but it depends.
Sure, what, what side is that line they're talking about possibly from the water plant over to the mega site?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Right. I mean, I, I get Commissioner Williams' point about, you know, not, not getting into the situation we were in when we first talked years ago about supplying water to Ellisville. My concern is funding. My concern is balancing the funding with the emergent need of this. You know, we've got several options up here that are just plus two million dollars, they've already got a million dollars. To me, it's easy to come up with another million dollars, run that, as opposed to coming up with, if you go to Ellisville route, how are we gonna pay for it?
We have, we have the money to pay for it when you look at it. And I'm, I'm a point whether we, we, we agree or not, uh, we're, we're talking about five to six million dollars on option two. Or option two, we're talking about two to three, three million dollars, we're talking about three hundred, three additional dollars to open up our whole area, uh, for future growth. And that way, we're not bonding up that, we have the money available right now to do the three million dollars, and, and we don't have to go look for it. We got the money there now, you just shift the money around. We got, we got plenty of money, we got money to do the three million dollars, everything to do Ellisville. And then we put that water line in the south end of the, looking out of future for future growth, and we done with it. We don't have to worry about it anymore, we done with it.
I think also that a lot of this need on the grant that the Catapult just got, a lot of that money is earmarked to go in our water plant, which is gonna be good for this work and then wherever it comes from, like to redo our tanks, our two main storage tanks are about worn out. And I think we're talking about fixing most of that.
No, the last, well, the last, to be honest with you, I mean, the last results that you got on the inspection, that you got on the tanks, really didn't prove out the fact of that.
I know, we got two, we got conflict in storage on the thing.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we saw that, we, we saw those. And, and so it's.
So the tanks might be okay then?
They might be okay.
Yeah, that's the point, we got, we got twenty years.
Oh, okay. So the tanks are not an issue with the, with the.
The first proposal is five years. Now we're, now we're twenty, okay.
That's great, yeah.
The tanks are all inclusion, the new day.
It's bare bones, they're, they're all bare bones. There it is, to get water from one spot to the, to Fort White.
All these are just to get good, clean water to the town plant.
So let's. My biggest concern is, and I get Gregor, moving involved, if, if we come from Ellisville and we come down to Fort White, is there any possible way in the future if they put in a big housing development where we can ever foster lose pressure on this side down here?
All your pressure doesn't change.
Well, I'm saying get the water here to us, is what I'm saying, so is, is there any possible?
Well, if, if that. At that time, we would put in a booster pump, right?
That's, that's, yeah, that's what I can say, and that's at the time, and you, where you, where you drop the booster pump running with me after, after they get their water. And then what you do, you boost it after that, and that would pick up, pick up pressure for the rest of the trip to Fort White. Cause the actual, the actual pressure with it going into your facility, the actual pressure going to the homes, it shouldn't change from what it is right now.
Cause it's gonna, I guess, because it's gonna go to your.
Just get it to the tiny stuff.
Right. Well, you tell you to change from that point on, go.
What is it costing?
Do we, do we need to get a bigger line than a twelve inch?
Three hundred.
But Greg, it's not even unrealistic to say if you put in point A and B, if you did get a huge volume deal now, you, you know, something, you could also create a storage tank there.
Yes.
And create, you know, just for your volume intake, what I'm about to say.
Sure. If, if you get a job generator in there, there's, yeah, there are other improvements that may need to be done, that may be worth investing in. The utility is gonna have to decide, you know, what we do and how we, how we accomplish that. And, um, yes, those qualifications can be done as they, as we grow into it, we can be grown organic.
Mr. Chairman. I, I'm not unsupportive of Commissioner Williams', of, of, of Commissioner Williams' position on Fort Ellisville. If we fund this, obviously we're gonna run it through ARPA money. And I know we're just here for information today on all this, but for me, to, to make a decision on which one of these is the best route to go, knowing we're gonna use ARPA money, I'd need to wait until we had the hearing on exactly how we're gonna expend all the ARPA funds. Because we still have the mega industrial site, we have a lot of other infrastructure needs in the county, people want to do so. I'd wanna see the big picture, how all those funds are gonna be expended, you know, before I committed to how mu, how much of that money we have available for this. I, I, I.
Yeah, I, I concur with Toby, and the danger's got a very valid point, you know, it's, it's an urgency, and it is something we, you know, we gotta move, continue to move forward on real quick.
And Mr. Chairman, to, to his point, I, I know we're having to have a lot of special, we need workshops to get things accomplished, but I would, I would, I would encourage you to set up a, a workshop for the ARPA funds in the near future, so we can get past that because that's gonna impact my opinion here.
Kraus, what's yours?
We're meeting next Thursday, we can add it to the agenda.
So next Thursday, when we meet with the, with the, we could add ARPA to the works of, we did, we add it to the meeting agenda.
That's what the board would like.
Yeah, cause we, we, we'll need to take action on that. Our, our, the workshop that we're scheduling, we take action on that.
I will call both meetings, one will be the regular meeting, one will be a special meeting. Be able to vote in either meeting.
Yeah, okay. So at that meeting, I think we should be prepared to take action on this, at that meeting, once we do our ARPA funding, is that?
Yeah, well, mainly, I mean, my main concern is, you know, we allocated ten million or whatever of the infrastructure as well, let's define what that infrastructure is, let's do it, let's go ahead and look at the unfunded projects and kinda come to consensus how much we're gonna put in each of those buckets, so we know how much we have available here. Cause we, I mean, I'm, I'm in full support of, you know, of, of the long range thing, and if we can get the Ellis, get it done from Ellisville, that's fine. But I don't wanna.
Yeah, and I'm saying, I'm open to even want to plan, I, I, my, my main goal is, it's not the problem.
Yeah, that's.
But, you know, there, you have, my thought is, you know, do we want to buy property or do we want to run top, you know what I'm saying?
But, you know, there, you have, my thought is, you know, do we wanna buy property or we wanna run pipe, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, oh, so if we can run pipe and not buy property, I would run to that money in pipe, you know? But we have to make sure we can fund that project before we do it. So, uh, I agree, let's, let's add that ARPA to the meeting, uh, next Thursday. And, uh, and let people prepare to, uh, to, uh, take action on this at that time.
I, I understand, but the third number, I was, I'm taking a bind out there to this, I'm saying, uh, give you sure it's happening to land here right now. The board did not want to buy, it was a land that we did end up buying after I pushed, made scenarios and so forth. So we end up buying the extra three other days. And, uh, he'll serve us well, you just, it's a long run, what it takes to expand and grow and you're doing that. And that's all I'm looking at. I, what it takes.
I think we all agree with you, Mr. Williams, you know, yeah, we wanna plan for the future and that is plan for the future by running Ellisville. But at the same, same time, you have to, uh, I, I've said it with you too. You have to make sure you can fund it. Greg, do you have something?
I did. When, when, y'all wanna meet on this particular topic, this coming up week, against Thursday?
Tuesday, I am.
Do we need to get back together with, so with the board, our council, so they know what's kinda, what's going on or which direction y'all have kinda decided in or? Is this, I wanna bring back up on the next meeting when we get back together.
And I would like to hear input from.
Right.
Now, for now, oh, which, which route y'all would like to happen? Because y'all are best about to get this off.
Right. And they're all gonna take the same amount of time, so it's not gonna hurt anything by doing the five million dollar project or the one point eight.
The chair said, I mean, you're probably not gonna buy that property right here. I mean, the one mile site, I mean, we would probably have to look at other options on that. But we already have a hundred acres that is set down in Fort White that we don't have to purchase. Um, then you'll have another, you know, basically another well site right there and could, you know, I know we'll have to get it back down here to treat it, but, I mean. I'm, I, I respect Commissioner Williams' opinion with coming from Ellisville. I mean, at this point, in my opinion, we, we're, we're sitting here waiting on y'all. I mean, just to help us. I mean, it, it, we got a million dollars to spend on it, but we all know a million dollars they will cost. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I say we've already got the hundred acre size. I mean, there's no property purchased. All we gotta do is drill wells and then lay the pipe.
How much, uh, David, how much ARPA money does the city of White have?
I don't, probably not.
Well, they had the one million.
They got a million dollar grant. That's not ARPA.
No, that's the grant money, yeah.
Right, yeah, they're just lead of appropriation.
Right. That's what they just.
Right.
Oh, but.
I mean, as far as.
You don't have no ARPA money, I'm telling you.
Sir.
I'm talking to Conley. You ain't got no ARPA money, do you?
Yes, we did.
Do you? Okay. You already spent it?
No.
Okay.
She ain't gonna spend nothing.
Scotty, you should have told me.
You should have. She got her purse on. She keeping that money.
She don't let you throw away her money, really.
Scotty, you were supposed to say no when you ended up.
You thought Del Williams was tired.
Senator Bill, you have anything that you wanna add or?
I like, uh, I like Ellisville. I know that's a lot more money, but my single thing would be the property that Fort White gave us. Ellisville sound like it's best for town.
To me, those are the two best options for me. Yeah, one, uh, can't do one, we do the.
Right. I agree with the two options on the table right now, knowing what we know about the property. I think we, uh, we, we entertain those two options. But Greg, Greg, it's the water, the water quality that, the water quality that Ellisville has, it's, I mean, it's great. I mean, it's good water. I, I, I'm talking, when I say good water, Fort White's got good water. I mean, Fort White's got good water. I'll tell you that when we send it for our testing, but that's not what I'm saying. It's good quality water. That's what we're at.
Ellisville.
So the water quality is, I mean, it's not just barely passing like Fort White. It's, we have no.
It wasn't hot.
None.
I'm gonna go there, give me some of that water. You better go throw your side, throw your side, get you a drink of water.
I love, I love you.
Yeah, we're gonna get this water right now. I'll give you a bottle and I'll bring it back to y'all when they leave.
Okay.
Okay.
Chair, Chair, this is the point, uh, you know, come through it from Ellisville. I mean, Ron, you've been through this a lot more times than anybody in this room, but what's the process of going through to change the duties and what have you? To be able to improve these properties for different aspects? I mean, we all know that we can't go out and put a target, you know, in the middle of eighteen right now. You know, but, but I'm saying that, that would, would you agree, Ron, that, that's something that would need to, as we go down this road, if we, that's the way we go. We need to get the process started to extend, extend and do this.
You, you have.
That's a long process to do so.
And I, I, uh, I, and, and, I, I know, I, I, I just know that, you're not, not saying nobody has to know. Uh, but I, I'm just being in a certain situation where we have bored and all should pass all over. And once we make a, make a decision in the past, somebody can say, you know, we should have done it this way, we should have done it that way, we should have seen fuck out. And I'm just looking at when, when, I, I would just, just, just count when, when he said a twenty years. And I say, damn, twenty years, seven, eight, 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 nine, I'll be ninety years old when we get this far. You ready?
You still been here?
And, uh, uh, I, 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 I like, I like looking ahead and, and, uh, predicting what's gonna happen and grow. You know, somebody can say, oh, should have done it this way. And I don't realize that you help my dogs. It has to be done and sometimes you have to, you have to. Well, y'all.
I, I, I agree with you how I'm saying. From, from very start, I believe this, Ellisville's the best option. Fight for your bucks. But you didn't vote for anybody. Definitely. But then again, you have to look at the value or the price, the price tag of it too. And, uh, and, and if we can swing it, I agree, Ellisville's your best option. To me, that's what you're gonna get the most pay for your buck, you run a pipe.
And it will open up development along that eighteen, which is.
But, but I agree with Commissioner Williams. You have to build the paper. You know, we got other things we have to pay for also. But if we can swing it, when we do that, I agree with Commissioner Williams. Our best option is Ellisville by far, you know?
I hadn't been down eighteen in a long time. And I guess about six months ago, I came down eighteen. It just shocked me from where I remember I had lived fifty, some odd years ago when I came down, I had to coat my body. And now, uh, it, it, it's gonna potentially grow. It's not gonna stop. People have found, well, out through the county and they spend a, a lot of money down here and get it on.
Everybody agrees that residential growth in the county don't happen in Charlotte.
Yeah, no, it's like there.
And eighteen is right for it, straight in Gainesville. I mean, that, the doctor could come live there and be close to his job.
Okay, I'm, I'm too, I'm too. I'm gonna say one more thing.
Go ahead.
Look, look, that's what we said. And my biggest concern, I know, I know the council, you know, Fort White's talking about something, we, we've got one shot at this. And this is our, we, we want a lot of, we got a million dollar pound. We're sitting on it and we're, we're tickled that maybe it's critical. And I don't wanna go down the road and, and let's go the wrong direction. I think the council was agreeing totally with me. And let's do, and like you said, and then get down the road and go, man, we should have done this, or we should have done that. So I, I definitely want it to be a very thought out process from everybody and go to the right, right direction. If it is the Ellisville, uh, way that, you know, uh, great, uh, if it's a cheaper way, as long as it's the right way, that we get good quality water.
Well, I think all the options provide you with good.
Both of them are good. Both of them are good options for what you. But, but we might can make, you know, if we're running all we maintain, we could go to more people.
Right, right.
Okay, and, and we can pay for it even quicker.
Well, it, it, it's, it's part of the business. It, it, it is. Y'all, it's a lot of, probably going, going, spend a little bit of money, but in return you'll get a lot of more money back.
We gonna do one of the others. It sounds like me.
Yeah.
You're gonna get your water replay.
Well, we appreciate y'all.
I think that's, you know, you asked me which one you can get quickest. Out of doubt, I'll tell you, the one that gets the quickest is the one that you can fund one hundred percent of the, the money. Million dollars that we got right now, don't get us a hundred percent on any of the alternatives.
Right, right.
You gotta figure out.
And we, we realize that, uh, Greg.
Funny guy. I'm gonna tell you, I thought about what Greg, what said a while ago, and I, if you start trying to buy property with the county, that could be a long process. I have found that out. So, you know, I think, I do think we need to look at the options that we're not buying property.
That, that only gives us two options.
That gives us two options.
For the right away.
Right away.
That's what we talk.
Well, property's cheap.
Well, see, that's, that's our situation with the well site off the Moore Hills Run. You've got some of the small, I don't know what path you're, you're gonna take. If you're gonna go up Moore Hills and one thirty one or.
You go ahead and go across private property.
We're gonna have to get far wider.
Right.
It should be a little bit easier. It should be a little easier, but.
Yes, sir.
We're putting pipes in the ground, not above.
And, and, and Mr. Kirby will tell you, we've been trying to acquire easements for the, for Cypress Lake Road for two years.
You can buy five acres, you can buy a paper foot on the end of the pipe.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna.
It ain't another option.
Uh, and you're, and, and y'all, the council is okay with either one of those?
That's great.
And once we, and, and once we decide. And once, once we decide, we will, we will schedule another meeting and give you our plan, or either we'll present it at one of y'all's council meetings and make sure y'all are okay with it.
Greg too.
Scotty, is that okay with you?
Funny, funny. Are you gonna let go of all that fifteen million you got? That's what I want.
All right, where we gonna need that?
Subway. Okay.
We gotta have a discussion in Subway.
So now, next Thursday, we're gonna address this at our special meeting. And we will make, we will make some plan and decision at the end of the day.
Uh, we, we go, go, uh, go determine how we're gonna spend our money.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and we're gonna determine how we're gonna spend some of Fort White's money.
There you go.
I like it, I like it. Go ahead. Did you get a motion to it there or?
Put some pride down on his daughter this weekend. When she comes in work, she sees that couple pop rap, she'll kill you.
You have a comment?
Y'all better leave her alone.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Too many comments.
Yep.
Do anybody, anybody tell anything bad to the people?
So you got anything you wanna add?
He's been quiet over here, he's a sturdy.
Cold.